Good evening and welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, October 10th, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting into order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. And Natty, if you would please do the real call.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
A Samurai?
Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement: Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up is the Agenda Approval Adjustments Announcements and Correspondence. We'll start with an approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Second.
Maddie and Lauren, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Announcements: October 12th at 7:30 here at the high school, there'll be an informational meeting regarding the bond referendum. October 16th at 6:15 at North Park will be an additional informational meeting regarding the bond referendum. October 17th at 5:00 p.m., the school board will, there'll be a school board listening session. Also on October 17th at 5:30, there'll be a school board work session. October 19th and 20th, there will be no school. October 24th, 7:00 p.m., there'll be a regular school board meeting. And October 30th at 6:30 here at the high school, there'll be another informational meeting regarding the bond referendum. Next up would be correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, is there any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Yeah, thank you. Communication to the board: Citizen and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is anyone here to speak tonight? Okay, don't see anybody. Next up will be the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the September 12th and 26th school board meetings, September 19th work session, the personnel report, lane changes, and the treasurer's report for July of 2017. If I could get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura? Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next up is discussion reports and information items. Reports from board members, members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Maddie?
Yeah, I'll give it a shot. I was able to attend a couple of football games in between there and had the privilege of going to the academic awards night and seeing all the kids up on stage who had met the requirements to letter academically in the last year. It was fun to see them celebrating academics. I attended a policy meeting just this earlier today and have had lots and lots and lots of conversation with the community members, given all our recent conversations happening in the school, so.
Thank you. Molly?
Yes, I also attended some of those football games, as well as some CA football games. Had the chance to go to a few adapted soccer games and the Highland picnic about a week and a half ago. Also attended homecoming coronation last night and, as Natty said, lots and lots and lots of conversations with community members.
Yeah, thank you. Laura?
Well, let me see. I attended the conferences over at Highland. I had many conversations with constituents, a lot of questions there. I attended the 9-16 board meeting last Wednesday and the chair meeting just prior to this.
Okay, thank you. I was at the, I believe it was the September 29th football game. I told her she gets to go last.
Oh.
We had a deal, so. No, no problem, that's okay. As I mentioned, the September 29th football game was an afternoon game here at 4 o'clock. Was able to attend the Highland picnic shortly after that. And then we had the tradition of tailgating, either prior to or in this particular case, after the football game at that one because it was an early game, seems to be growing. And I know that for the homecoming, there's a big push for getting people there at 5:00 for the tailgate party prior to the Friday's game, which is homecoming, as I mentioned. I attended the Safer Streets meeting. I was at the policy meeting prior to this and then a chair meeting prior to this. And that concludes my report, so.
All right? Okay. Thank you. I also attended the academic awards night over at the high school, so that was, as Natty said, a great event. I was also able to attend a middle school football game this last weekend in the rain. I heard fans, right, out there in the rain. It was a beautiful day afterwards. Also attended the Safer Streets meeting and, as all of you, have had many conversations with our community members. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Next up would be the superintendent's report. Do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Mr. Chair and members, I had the privilege of attending the first meeting of the American Indian Education Parent Meeting. That is truly just our district. It was its inaugural meeting. It was facilitated by Director Stenwick. And really, the focus on that, we received some really good feedback on the World's Best Workforce Plan from their perspective. I attended a school law conference with Directors Stenwick and Superintendent Intern Tara Tuckrell. And the focus on that was current practices and issues going on in general education. And we're bringing some of that information back to work with the management team. One of the things that we're going to be looking at in depth is the visitors' policies that we have, and there may be recommendations to the school board. I too attended the Citizens for Safer Streets Fall Meeting. Director Hennekenz and Stunkel, as well as Principal Ed Fellows and his family, attended there, as well as multiple members of the board. And from my perspective, it seems like progress is really being made in that area and hats off to all of those working on that. I met with coffee and conversations with the interim Chief of Police, Lenny Austin. So that was fun. That was really our first coffee and conversation since he's been on the job. And we had issues of mutual concern and interest, so it was a fun meeting. I attended the Striker Game that was the nail-biter with Stillwater. Go Strikers! That was just the best game ever. So proud of the team. As most of you did, I attended the academic awards night and I want to congratulate the students on a job well done. The Highland Fun Night was just really packed to the seams and the 4 o'clock football game was nice as well. We're going through the audit upstairs in the business office, and so I had, I was interviewed twice by the auditors, as is procedural this time of year. In addition to that, I attended the E-12 Admin Meeting. I went to AMSD. And then we also had our first Fall Meeting of the Norris Suburban Secondary, Post-Secondary Success Consortium. I called it the Districts of Six before. And so that's rolling along very nicely. And I attended a superintendent meeting for districts withdrawing from ties, and that'll be subject of our next work study. I had individual meetings with some of you and I want to thank you for your time. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, next up would be Item C would be the Build-in Vision Card for Valley View Elementary.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Principal Fellows and I are here, Superintendent Kelly, excuse me. Principal Fellows and I are here this evening to present the Valley View Strategic Card with the data from last school year.
Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, thank you for allowing Valley View to share what, where we're at and where we're going. There's a lot of exciting things and so, as there's questions that come along, please feel free to ask them. And if I don't know, I will find out quickly to the answer, since I'm new to some of the data pieces. Of course, we'll be focusing on excellence in this presentation. And we're going to start off with our enrollment. This is the historical data, including this year from October 1st. And so those, that's a focus that we are trying to increase our visibility and make sure that we are getting kids in our zone into our schools. And so part of that is our outreach effort. As I had mentioned beginning of the school, we did some neighborhood walks and home visits. We also are including Avid from K-5, kindergarten first and second grade with their notebooks and getting indoctrinated with the Avid way of thinking. As far as our demographics, it is very similar to what it has been the last couple of years And then this is our enrollment by special populations. And so that's also been consistent within the last couple of years as well. And the strategic roadmap, I'm sure you guys are more familiar with this than me, with this being my first year, but these are some areas that we're going to be talking about. And so, as far as being standards-based in what we're offering our students, we're in line with what the district initiatives are. We're also trying to differentiate what's going to be best for Valley View. So the first one, based on last year's implementation, was out of five. As far as PLCs and the four Questions Monthly at the minimum, we have those at the four. And as you can see, this year, we're really trying to grow the PLC concept and embed that during the school day. We're growing it with our classroom teachers and then we're layering in our EL teachers and sped support so that they're there to offer support to the students and so that we're not doing that separate learning in silos by department. And so we're really going to be digging down to the student level so we can reach what each, where each kiddo is at and what their needs are. And then the formative student learning data has been ongoing. I know the district has systems in place and so I know all the classroom teachers, minus some of the pre-K classrooms, are using all of the district-wide assessments that are being offered. Effective teaching strategies resulting in student engagement in the learning, based on the data that I was able to see. It looks like we're in the 80% to 89% as far as that area goes. And then 21st Century Learning, I know that last year was fifth grade, one-on-one technology and bringing that down to the fourth grade this year. And then we're also making sure that our K-1 and 2 kiddos are being exposed to tablet technology. They're not quite ready for the keystrokes in the K-1 areas, but we're trying to make sure that it's not just a standalone tutoring type of learning, but guided more towards project-based eventually. And then 80% or more of all the teachers were evaluated as proficient. And so that is the, a 1 through 6. Is there any questions on those? And then going through a 7, 8, and 9, as you can see, my copy-paste abilities are not great. That's why we have a green X up there. Presentation of, presence of multi-tiered interventions for academics, that has been ongoing. I know that that's continuing to grow and be more focused. The math interventions included Dreambox, Renaturally. And this year, we've dedicated school-wide intervention time, we call it I-time. For those students not needing I-time, then we're going to have some extensions available to them so that they're, we're not just in a remedial mindset, but trying to offer extensions to our students that are where they need to be. And then in grades 2 through 5, they're getting trained on press reading interventions. We also are using a rock and read lab, which will be used during intervention time, and that is free. And they brought in all their computers and they're offering the people and the stuff. And so they have research that goes with that. And so if I find a $100 bill on the sidewalk, I usually pick it up. And so this, that's kind of one of the things that we're looking at, seeing if that's worthwhile. But the teachers are really excited about using that program. And then on A-8, that kind of goes into the behavior piece. We're revisiting our responsive classroom and what are we doing within grade levels and individual classrooms to make sure that we're keeping our kids in class and engaged. And of course, if we don't have engaged students, then we have kids off task and that looks differently for everyone. But how do we respond to that instead of just focusing on the fact that they're not engaged? But what are we doing to bring them back into the learning process? And so we were, we were at a Level 3 on that, based on the data that I saw. And then presence of STEAM. We do have the media arts and the science for 3, 4, and 5, and then, of course, the Spanish. And so that's why that's at a 4 is that it does, it's not going all the way K-2 as far as the STEAM piece goes. Everyone's being exposed to the science through the separate.
Foskers.
Foskers and keeping those updated. And then A-13 is the one that applied to elementary. And so points of contact for parents. And Valley View is very good at offering school-wide events and those are well-attended. And so normally those are, there's more than one point of contact for parents outside of just the conferences. And so that's something that we're, that is a strength that we're looking to build on. Is there any questions on those points? And then, this is somewhat new to me, and so I was with DISA and Xena's team and they walked me through some of the data. And so when we're looking at student growth by the data that was given, these are the results that we have. One of, my philosophy is we got to just share where we're at and then go forward. There's no sense in, I better be talking about what we're doing to address situations and that's where we're at, based on the data that I saw. And that is definitely in our steps for action, for moving forward. And then on the curriculum base, you can see where we're at on all those different assessments. Is there any questions on those? And then when we're looking at the MCAs, those are reflected, they're similar to what the MAP results showed as far as levels of concern. And so those are things that we are talking about as a staff and with grade levels and how we're going to address it. And we have a game plan in, and so like I tell them, it's not the lottery. And so the school's not done to us, we do it. And so we do have a game plan in place for those MCA scores and with science being our strength right now. And so we're trying to grow that and embed that model in some different parts of, because it's so hands-on, if we can grow that in all the other subjects. Is there any questions on that particular slide? And then, excuse me. What we saw, there were some discrepancies in referrals for out-of-class. And some of it had to do with the number of students and subsets and percents. What I preach and strive to do is make sure that we do what's best for our kids and make sure that we're providing a safe, orderly environment that can be engaging for students. And so based on the data, that's what the referral showed. As I said, we're looking to implement responsive classroom consistently, school-wide, including our common areas. And so that was an area that, as a campus, that we had identified in August. And so moving forward, we're trying to be consistent, school-wide, on that. And then our, so they're getting referred, but they're not being sent home all the time, so that's good. And so moving forward, our SMART goal for literacy is what I am telling and encouraging all of our students, not just the teachers, is that we're all about moving to the right. And so students are broken down into quartiles. And so the green and the blue are, if they passed are better, and yellow and red is if they were near passing or not. And so we're looking at growing those groups and moving to the right by 10%. And then the one on the far left, we're looking to decrease by 10% as we move forward. And those are being mirrored also in math. And the numbers up there are number of students in grades 3, 4, and 5. I don't want to keep those up too long, but if you want us to discussion any of that, I'll be happy to. And the same thing for math. And then, as I said, as far as the responsive classroom and school-wide discipline, we're looking to decrease our referrals by 10% or more. We're looking to decrease those by more, of course, but we need to have a baseline. And that also means that I don't want there to be a tolerance of students not following what's expected in the school. Ignoring behavior isn't helping us achieve that goal. And so being consistent in creating that, that culture of engagement. And so what we're looking at is our continuous improvement goals, focusing on literacy and math, bringing Avid down to the K-5 instead of just 3, 4, 5. And then our media arts is growing and it's becoming student-centered, I know, at the fifth grade level as well. And then our focus on literacy is going to continue on the, with the Wonders Curriculum at K-1. I know that the last PD the district offered, the teachers were really excited. After they started implementing, they were seeing some connections. And then the presses, district-wide as well. And then our formative assessments, it's really important that we know what our kids are learning in classroom and then offering those opportunities of reteach and extension immediately. Kind of a coach's mentality, if you keep missing a layup, you should probably practice layups right away and not wait a couple of weeks. And so we're trying to incorporate that into our everyday practices and same with math. And becoming more dependent on what the state's standards and expectations are in using the curriculum as a, as a resource and not necessarily hope that it's lined up to what the state expects of us, but making sure that we're getting the rigor and relevance according to what we're being judged by. And then bringing Avid down is, and we're having a lot of communication, the little kids' note-taking looks a little different than the high schoolers'. And so there's a lot of pictures and a lot of direct modeling and guided practice with that. But they are excited to bring their binders and notebooks in every morning, and so they are bringing in some of those strategies. And then our media arts is continuing. And one thing that we started, we got a news crew with fifth graders and they are creating the morning announcements, and those are embedded in YouTube, and they're writing the scripts, and they're doing all the recording. And I know Ms. Stark is helping with the editing of the film. They're not there to be completely independent on that, but that's been a really neat resource that, inactivity that they've been participating in. And then, of course, other points of interest, the playground continues to stay busy during school and after school. It's been a real focus of the community. And then Partners for Academic Success in grades 1 through 5, having parents come to the school and offering them materials to work on some academics that are needed. And of course, incorporating science and collaborating on the PLCs. And so the science teacher is in there with the other classroom teachers and, as well as some of our EL staff as well. One of the wonderful things that we've experienced is having someone in the library full-time. That has just been spectacular. We've been doing events and, of course, the, you know, sharing there is just dynamite and dressing like a pirate and having all kinds of hands-on activities. And so that, that has been fantastic, having that resource. And then we are off and running with Encore. And our targeted services are offered in the morning, too, for those students that need help with math and reading. So that's our big happy family.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Just curiosity, just in general, Xena maybe, and to you, Ed, for Valley View, about the Encore classes and then the kids, I mean actively participating. I seen a lot of the kids jumping in.
We are. We have met our quota for what we were thinking, what we were hoping for. We have waiting lists in some of the, for some of the classes in the district, so we're excited for second semester to offer new classes. So far, so good with Encore. Dean Erickson is our Encore site facilitator at Valley View. And then we have teacher site facilitators for each day as well, supporting the teams. Director Stunkel and I run around to the schools after school and check in on all the different courses. And to see kids engaged and doing unique classes after school has been dynamite. You know, they, they get their snack right after school and then they head off to class, they get a bus home. So, so far, so good. It was, it was quick, the timeline was very quick to get it up and running and we're glad that it's up and running in our second week.
Good, thank you. I just remember when my kids were at North Park, that was something that they always looked forward to and was one of the few things they would show me when they came home from school with their papers, was what the choices were for Encore. So it just, it seemed like, I know it helped my kids and I know it helped a lot of the kids, and it's exciting to have that back again for as long as they'll let us have it, so.
Yeah, we're very thankful for the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant.
And Dean Erickson has been fantastic, getting everything together, so I can't sing her praises enough. And the engagement that the teachers have been giving the kids have been top-notch. And so when they're excited after school, you know that's saying something.
That's good. Okay, anybody else?
How was your adjustment going to the community and the school? New guy, you're the new guy.
I'm just absolutely loving this area.
Good.
Now, my five-year-old, this is the first time I got a chance to see her go to school this morning, because I was home. And so she came and was getting dressed and she said, "I guess there's no recess, Dad." I go, "What are you talking about?" "Oh, it's way too cold at recess today." And so we're, hopefully, I'm sure the little Texan will be winterized by the end of December, I'm hoping. But it's been wonderful.
We call that the acclimation process in Minnesota, yeah.
That's exactly right.
Good.
But I can't say enough for Superintendent Kelly and all of her departments, and you guys have been very welcoming, so I'm very appreciative of that. Thank you for asking.
Anybody else? Hey, thanks for coming in tonight.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll move on to our action items. First up is the World's Best Workforce Annual Report. Xena?
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. At a previous board meeting, the board was presented with the World's Best Workforce Annual Report. It's part of Statute 120B11. And based on some, there were amendments and some additions made to the report based on recommendations from the school board at the previous meeting that were put forth in your packet. And so this evening, I'm here to ask the governance question based on those additions and amendments to approve the content of the World's Best Workforce Report.
Okay, start off the motion and move that forward.
So moved.
More? Thank you.
Second.
Sound good?
Uh, Natty. Discussion.
I, in looking through, I see kind of added the, kind of where we're at, the goals for each of the areas. So I do appreciate that coming in. I still feel like, though looking through this, we're still lacking a little bit in that communication point in terms of some of the goal areas where we're not meeting goals and what we're doing to address those. I, I think that there's, obviously, this report shows that there's a lot of really great things happening in our district and that's, and that's evident. I mean, there's fabulous things. And I think all of those things are contributing to the success that we're having. However, there are still areas where we're not meeting expectations. And I'm not sure that this report fully addresses those areas and what we're doing to continue to address some of the parts of what we're doing where we're not quite up to par. But I do, I appreciate the efforts that have been put in to make some of the adjustments from our last meeting, but I think that we're still missing really some of the disclosure that we need to have.
Any other discussion or comments? Okay, hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And motion carries. Okay, next up is the Local Superintendent Teacher Agreement.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the school board. At the September 26th school board meeting, we met in closed session with our district attorney, Karen Keppel, present. At that meeting, we discussed the outcome of the negotiations process with our teachers and the tentative agreement that we had reached with them. Included in that session was a review of all the language and financial changes. Therefore, I'm here tonight to take, ask you to take formal action on the master agreement between Independent School District Number 13, Columbia Heights Public Schools, and the Federation of Teachers Local 10, 710.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Lauren?
Second.
Got to give it to Molly this time. Got to give it to Molly this time. Discussion?
I'm glad you came to agreement. That's excellent. Thanks for the hard work. Thanks to the teachers. They're not here.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Designation of Electronic Transfer Designees.
Mr. Chair and members, what you have in front of you tonight is just merely a change in designees for processing the electronic funds transfer. Since we've had a change in staff, we have to change the signatures. And so, the governance question is just approval of these signatures, if you would.
Motion, move that forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Natty? Discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next up, Board Policy. It's the second reading. The policies that are up is 425, which is Staff Development, 203.2, which is Order of Regular School Board Meetings, 602, Organization of School Calendar and School Day, 603, Curriculum Development, 604, Instructional Curriculum, 607, Organization of Grade Levels, 610, Field Trips, 903, Visitor to the School District's Building and Sites. These policies appeared on the September 26th meeting for review. An approval is for this evening's meeting. We'll start with the motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura? Discussion? Superintendent Kelly, has there been anybody that's contacted you regarding, since the first reading?
Mr. Chair and members, there has been no contacts on any of these policies through our office.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
No, just a reminder that there was no significant huge changes in any of these.
Legislative stuff?
Yeah. It must be recommendations and such.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next up, Board Topics. Does anyone have anything this evening for Board Topics?
I know it's been mentioned, but we're going to have a tailgate outside on Friday night before the football game, so come on down at 5 o'clock. People have grills. If you don't have a grill, you can throw something on someone else's grill and whatever it is you eat.
And it is homecoming and I believe that they have their Hall of Fame recognition at halftime for their inductees this year, so there'll be some fun halftime stuff as well, so.
And if it doesn't rain, there'll be fireworks.
That's right, there is fireworks. Yep, you are correct.
Well, let's hope for no rain.
Yes.
Repeat from last week was not fun.
Anyone else with Board Topics? Hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:34. Thanks, everybody.